And the subject property complies with all four of those criteria. To provide you with some background on the property, so the home itself was constructed back in 1934. Back in 2007, the applicant came forward to request six occupants be allowed as a rooming dwelling on the subject property. At that time, there were a number of deficiencies which prevented the planning commission from issuing the specialties permit for six people. And ultimately, the specialties permit was issued for three people. In September of last year, the fire department received a complaint from a tenant of the property. And following an inspection, found that there were five occupants. The fire department notified the owner of the over occupancy. And as a result, there we had a series of meetings, which resulted in the application before you tonight to bring that occupancy of five folks into compliance with code. With that application, the site would be brought into compliance with our current standards for landscaping and parking. And so that's some of the things you'll see on this diagram. On the screen, you'll see that some additional landscaping is proposed to the property to bring it into compliance with code requirements. As well as bicycle parking on the property, consistent with the requirements for a rooming dwelling. There's no other site work proposed with this application. There is also, I will note, in your recommended staff recommendation tonight, an encroachment of the existing driveway onto the neighboring property to the north. And so I'm recommending that the applicant work with that neighbor to either get an easement for that encroachment. Or to work with the neighbor to remove the encroachment from their property. The applicant has reached out to that property owner to attempt to initiate that conversation. And has not, at last I knew, at least of last week, has not received a response to that correspondence. We'll continue to work with them to try to secure that, continue that dialogue, or start that dialogue with the adjoining property owner to address that issue. Terms of vehicle parking, the property applicant's proposing six parking spaces. As you know, we don't have any minimum parking requirement, but that would be one additional space beyond the number of licensed applicant, or licensed occupants on the property. The applicant is also proposing bicycle parking, consistent with the code. As is typical, we'll need a specification for the spaces that are proposed to ensure that they meet our city specifications. And then finally, we'll need a specification for the screening of the trash receptacles to make sure that it's screened in accordance with code. Terms of private landscaping and fencing, as I mentioned, the applicant is proposing to bring those into compliance with code. By screening the parking area at the rear and planting the required trees in the front lawn and front tree lawn of the street. So with that, staff's recommendation is approval of the specialties permit and site plan, subject to the following conditions. One, that the applicant work with the neighbor to either get an easement or remove the encroachment from their property. Two, that a code compliant landscaping plan be provided for the private landscaping screens and streetscaping. Three, that the applicant provide a detail for the proposed bicycle parking. Four, that the applicant provide a detail for the proposed solid waste screening. And five, that the applicant comply with the requirements of the Division of Public Works and Public Safety. The applicant and her agent are here this evening to answer any questions you have. And before that, I'm happy to answer any questions from the planning commission.
Yes, I do have one question that said it was, they were approved for three occupants, but they found five occupants. Was there five people on the lease?
I'm not sure exactly how they confirmed there were, there were five people living in the house. So I don't know if they were leaseholders, or if they were just simply living in the house as five people. But in any case, in either case, the fact that there were five people occupying the house was an over occupancy.
Mr. Kane, do you know how many square feet the house is?
Um, I do not offhand, I believe it may be in the application. There is a finished basement in the home, which contributes to the square footage. Part of the reason why the application in 2007 for six people was rejected. Was that there was not the sufficient land area or building area to accommodate those six tenants. The home does, because of a change in the housing licensing code with relation to ceiling height. That building area in the basement is now eligible area to be counted towards occupants. And even back in 2007, our land area requirements were identical to what they are today. But even then, five occupants would have been the maximum by land area. So it's other codes have come into alignment with the request to make five a legal occupancy.
So now they can count the basement?
Correct.
Which is how they can get five?
Correct.
Any other questions for Mr. Kane?
Are there other, are there other properties that have been found to be over occupied? That have been offered the solution of changing the occupancy?
There have been, it's pretty common for us to find over occupancies around town throughout the year. In most cases, the over, the light properties are already licensed to their maximum potential. And so if they're over occupied, there's not an opportunity to adjust the specialty use permit in order to allow the occupancy legally. In this case, because the codes have changed since that 2007 specialty use permit was issued. It's actually possible today to make that occupancy of five a legal occupancy. That's an unusual circumstance. The vast majority of rooming dwellings in the community are either licensed to their maximum potential already. Or are licensed beyond what's allowed by today's code and are nonconforming occupancies from typically before even 1984.
Any other questions for Mr. Kane? If the applicant would like to come up?
Hi, I'm Connie Hulk, I'm an engineer at Prynn and Newhop, and I helped fill out the application and do the site plan for the project.
And I'm Jackie Pillater, owner of the property.
Any questions for the applicant?
So how'd we get here?
I'm sorry, what was that?
How'd we get here? Licensed for three, had five.
Yeah, back, back previous to this, the house used to be licensed for seven. And then the house was remodeled for six. And then all of that happened in, was it 2006 or 2007, and then the house went down to three. There's six bedrooms in the house, and I think that's why the tenants had more people in the house.
The tenants did.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't, I mean, you can go ahead and speak. Like, how many on the lease?
There's five on the lease.
There were five on the lease.
So you signed a lease for five people, knowing that only three were allowed to live there?
Well, I considered it an oversight, I had a conversation with, I can't think of his name at the moment. But he's no longer with the fire department. And he said, I don't see it as a problem to have five people since you already have six bedrooms. But he neglected to tell me that I needed to come before the board to make it official.
Okay, doesn't the city give you a occupancy certificate saying how many people can live there?
Pardon me?
Doesn't the city give you an occupancy certificate telling you how many people can live there?
They don't actually give you a certificate.
Well.
But they inspected every year, and it was inspected and passed every year. So I say the fire department did not look into that. Because they knew there were five people there every year.
Okay, alright.
So, so what you're saying is they don't actually give you a certificate that says this house is licensed for three people?
I've been a landlord for 33 years, and I've never received an actual document that says what it's licensed for.
Were you, were you not notified of when the occupancy level changed?
Pardon me?
Were you notified of when they went down to three?
Not an official notification, I did notice that it said that on the inspection sheet. And then the firemen would come and do the inspection, and there'd be five people. There was never an issue about it, because there was actually six bedrooms, so. I, I don't know. What precipitated the, one of your tenants to put in a claim, is that what? A complaint? Yeah. Uh, she wanted to get out of the lease. And I told her that wasn't a problem if she just found someone else to take her place, because she did sign the lease. But was she aware that there was only supposed to be three, or? I suppose she went on the internet and looked it up.
It's unfortunately not actually possible on the web to find out the licensed occupancy that's allowed in, in homes. So jumping back to Commissioner Rize's question before kind of ancillary to that. We, we do often find that there are tenants who, most students' tenants aren't looking up to find out the legal occupancy of a home. They're trusting the landlord to provide them with accurate information. And so in many cases, we found that the students were unaware that they were in an over occupancy circumstance, until we bring it to their attention.
But I see here, it says the planning commission in 2007 permitted three occupants, were you not involved in that application? Did you?
I can, I might be able to jump in here, so I, in the applicant's defense, yeah, so in 2007, the applicant was the applicant before the planning commission. And at that time, did receive a letter from the planning commission, as all applicants do, as to the outcome of the case before the planning commission. It was subsequent to that, that the conversation occurred with a member of the fire department that I think led us down this path of over occupancy erroneously. And so in light of that, we've been trying, and I will give the applicant credit. That she's been very willing to work with us to rectify this and make it right. Even though there was that miscommunication between her and other members of city staff shortly after the 2007 public hearing. If I, if I understood her correctly, it was, it was in the very immediate aftermath of that approval. So I think that there was some just cause for her confusion. And she's been working in good faith with us for the last several months to get this case before you tonight, so that we could bring this into compliance.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant?
Think we could run this railroad better than that. Somewhere in the inspections and the permissions and the communication.
I mean, I will tell you that planning staff and building staff, we periodically meet with the fire department. They're obviously, as is true in any organization, we all have our certain roles. And so you tend to be focused on the thing you do and that you know. But they are our eyes and ears, because we don't enter these homes, I can't walk in, I can't demand access to these homes. So, and they do, I don't want you to get the idea that a large number of the over occupancies we learn about are the result of the work of the fire department. They're the primary avenue, other than neighbor complaints, by which we find out that these over occupancies exist. So they're doing their best, but they're also inspecting thousands of units every year. And they can't possibly catch every, or be certain of every over occupancy situation that's out there. Just happened in this case, we did have, there was a lease, there was, there was certainty, the applicant wasn't denying that there were five people living there. That's not always the case, sometimes these are illegal occupancies without a lease, or with a landlord or property owner who's denying there's an over occupancy. Sometimes the tenants are denying there's an over occupancy, so they're not always very cut and dry.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
I do kind of have a general question. When, when the firemen go to inspect a property, how are they supposed to know what the occupancy is? And how is the owner supposed to know what the occupancy is?
So the fire department is going to be, all their inspections are tracked using software, which is called BSNA. We use it for a lot of different things internally, and a lot of other, many Michigan municipalities use that software. When you look at the certificate information and where the inspections are logged, there's a field that shows the licensed occupancy and the occupancy classification. So if it's a single family home, it'll say, single family, if it's licensed for 10 people, there'll be a 10 there. And so that's how, if one of you were to call my office and say, can you tell me the licensed occupancy of this property? That's how I'd find that information. So when they go on their inspections, they would have access to that information. Challenge is if you, in this instance, you know, you have multiple people living in a home independently. You can count beds, cars aren't very reliable, because people might be visiting, or there's only so many reliable means of determining who lives there. And they're not necessarily always inspecting the property when it's occupied.
Right.
Or necessarily when the tenants are home, so.
Okay, so say somebody was looking to buy a rental property. And the owner says, yeah, it's licensed for 10. Somebody buys it and finds out it's licensed for five. How would that person go about checking that before they purchase the property?
They can call City Hall, or they can call the fire department. Either, we routinely do that. So I, I would hazard that 20% of my call volume is related to housing licenses and checking the status. And it's a really smart thing to do, in addition to checking the zoning of the property before you buy it, is to check that license occupancy. And we do, to your point, every so often have a circumstance like that, where a buyer either didn't know that we had certain rules about occupancy in town. Or was misadvised by a seller or agent, and found out later that there was an occupancy issue.
Okay, so there's not, there's not a certificate you can pull, you just have to check?
I'm not certain of that, I can find out for next month. I don't own a rental in town, so I don't know exactly what gets sent out. I know that when the initial license is sent, and there's obviously follow-up letters every year for the inspections. But I'm not sure exactly what those say when they receive them. I would be surprised if they didn't reference occupancy, but.
But also, you have to apply for a special use permit for it, don't you, for the multifamily residential?
Yes, but we do have, most of our rooming dwellings are already existing. And so those folks would still be on an annual basis, being invoiced by the fire department and going through an inspections process.
So it's a hiccup in the system that for six, seven, eight, 12 years, the fire department's coming by and saying, check?
I, you know, I would say with, I wish I could tell you the number offhand, but I know there's somewhere on the order of 5,000 plus rental units in the city. And you know, there's, we don't have 5,000 firefighters. So one, I mean, I'm, I'm sure that every so often they miss something. It's just the nature of the odds with 5,000 units, that somebody might slip through the cracks.
Have you talked with them about this situation, or?
I have, well, I mean, this situation came to my attention through the fire department. So they've definitely had conversations about how this was missed. And we're a lot more careful about ensuring that the, the fire department staff who are doing the inspections are aware that there are policies in place that treat these as special uses, so that information's not shared with property owners that's inaccurate. As I think it did happen in this case. So that property owners are getting correct information about what they have to do in order to get certain approvals.
Are there other communities that limit the number of tenants that can live in a property? Like if a house has six bedrooms, wouldn't you kind of assume that they could have six tenants?
Most, I, it's not uncommon, and especially in a college community, it's the norm. To have occupancy regulations that define a family unit, and that would define in some manner, how many individuals can live in a setting like this.
Because my, my understanding is if you have unrelated people, those are multi, those are, that's treated different than if you have a family that has two adults and three children, right? So that would be okay, but five adults is not. So we're, so we're regulating the type of people that can live in the dwelling?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and have been since 70, the 71 code, at least in a more direct way like we do now. Prior to 1971, I think even under the 61 ordinance, we had a definition of family. And certain limitations on how many individuals could be on a particular lot.
I, I'm just saying that, I mean, obviously things, families have changed over the decades. So I, I, that's all I'm bringing into question is.
Cut, because in my neighborhood, we've had some of these situations come up, and cousins, oh, cousins are related. Brothers and sisters and a cousin.
Right.
You know, so you can kind of.
You can, in the.
Well, I mean, I just, you know, there's partners, there's, there's a lot of different situations where you might have adults living in a home that are related. Who don't meet our definition of family.
I would encourage you to read our definition of family in the definition section, because it's actually very inclusive of what you're describing. So it's, it's relatively old, and I'm relatively impressed whoever drafted it back then. Did a very good job of being open to a lot of family combinations that would have probably been not at the forefront of people's minds in the early 80s or late 70s. So they actually did a pretty good job of being inclusive of those type of circumstances. This is really about situations where you just have multiple unrelated adults living together. That rooming classification exists.
I remember Tim Dresniak had a, a project that was south of Paul's school. And it had an, it had an extra bedroom, but it was written in the lease. I don't, I don't know if Joe was, Joe constructed, I think they were in there together. But they had it written in the lease that there was a severe penalty if they found out that they were renting that other bedroom, because it was out of compliance.
Yeah.
So bedrooms don't equate people.
In any event, not that I expect anyone to come up for public comment, but I'm going to open up public comment before we have further discussion. So I'm opening public comment, if everyone, if anyone from the public would like to comment. Seeing no one, I'm closing public comment, and we can. Well, it seems like we were having discussion, and.
Oh, I see.
It's a public hearing.
You're right, you're right, you're right.
We can go back to discussion.
We jumped.
So, back to your point, Commissioner, that. It would be reasonable for somebody to assume when they purchased a property, if it has six bedrooms, that they could have six tenants. And so that's where I'm, that's kind of where I'm going, is, is, you know, these, our regulations can, can be confusing for new buyers, and yes, buyer beware, but I, I just would like to kind of point that out, that's all.
Is that relevant to this case? I thought the applicant had owned the property for like 30 years, maybe I missed something here?
Well, I think it's relevant to why she assumes she could have five tenants, that's all.
Well, I think it's a systemic problem, yes.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
And I think the system should fix its problem.
It is though, it is buyer beware. I mean, you have to check it out, because you would think realtors would explain that when they were selling a piece of property, but that always does not happen.
Yeah, I would say, I roadshow to the real estate agencies. I try to get through the cycle every two years. And that's usually on, I mean, that's always at the top of the list is, number one, call me, have your buyer call me, have your seller call me. If there's questions about zoning, so that you know what you're advertising or buying before you sell or buy. And two, that housing licensing questions, that we can answer those very easily. And that's why we do get a lot of, a tremendous number of phone calls about those type of issues. But every so often, it's mom and dad from Clarkston, and they've never bought a house in another town, and they don't think about it, and they don't live here, and oops. And then we deal with it retroactively, which we don't like to do, but it does happen from time to time.
I move to approve SUP 2002 and SPR 2002, subject to the following conditions. The applicant shall obtain an easement for the existing driveway encroachment, or work with the neighbor to remove the encroachment. The applicant shall provide a code compliant landscape plan for all private landscaping screens and streetscaping. The applicant shall provide details for the proposed bicycle parking, which demonstrate compliance with city specifications. The applicant shall provide a specification for screening of waste containers, consistent with the requirements of the CD4 district. The applicant shall comply with the requirements of the Division of Public Works and Public Safety.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed, motion passes. Next, item on the agenda is public comment. If anyone from the public would like to speak, now would be the last opportunity to do so. Seeing no one, I'm closing public comment, and next item on the agenda is new business. Recommend a planning commission representative to the zoning board of appeals.
Alright, Madam Chair, every year, the planning commission makes a recommendation to the city commission of who to appoint as the crossover member to the zoning board of appeals. That is for a one-year term, and currently Commissioner Friedrich is that crossover member.
I'd like to re-nominate Commissioner Friedrich.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Next, item on the agenda is joint meeting with the city commission.
Madam Chair, every year, the planning commission has a joint meeting with the city commission. This year, we are, hopefully, we're looking to have that joint meeting on the night of our April meeting at 6 o'clock here in the commission chamber. So just looking for a motion to set that meeting.
Move to set a joint meeting with the city commission for Thursday, April 9th, 2020, at 6:00 PM in the City Hall commission chambers.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Next, item on the agenda is follow-up to the January 9th, 2020 work session.
Madam Chair, we had a work session last month, Mr. Oliveri attended to provide information to the planning commission. This is on new business, to see if the planning commission would like any additional information from staff. If you have any requests for ordinance amendments in response to what you learned. Or if you wish to direct me to do nothing at this time. So just looking for a direction from the planning commission on that item.
It's not really a point of order. If we have nothing at this time formal to go forward with, that doesn't mean something can't happen later.
Correct.
Am I correct? Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I just didn't know the, whatever developments had taken place.
Well.
I haven't come in and talked with you about it.
Um, I've thought a lot about it, and I appreciated Joe's presentation. But we did go through a process, and we had the charrettes and lots of input. And a lot of us, I got thinking, a lot of us went through the training, the online training about form-based codes, which was very, very helpful. And Kathy, you didn't have that opportunity, did you?
No.
Yeah, and so I think it's still a, an option, an available thing for you, that it would help. I, I don't know who else, I think all the rest went through it, but.
Christine may not have yet.
Oh, Chris, yeah, Christine would.
Christine and Kathy joined the same month, I believe.
I think, I think it would help you to kind of see.
Yeah.
Why we are where we are.
Yeah, and I thought about it too, if we are moving houses up close to the road, like within the 15-foot mark. If you have your garage at the front of that, you have no room for your car. So that, you know, that was just something that I thought of, you know, kind of a practical thing. So I was thinking, you know, if we really do, I, the, the point of the discussion was about the garages. And so I, you know, I think that, that we really want to set that, the garage, no matter what else goes on. You know, when we do have, if we do have another discussion about it, garages need to be set back at least 20 foot from the front of the property, so that somebody can park their car and have, have that visibility to drive in and out of their garage. So, you know, that was just something that I thought of as a practical thing, is why this couldn't happen the way we've got the code. Is the house is actually too close to the road to have a car in the driveway.
But that's, that's kind of the whole thing about the form-based code. But that's, that's kinda the whole thing about the form-based code and what, what.
Right, that's what, yeah, that was.
That's what came out that the community wanted.
But we're not proposing that houses, I mean, the zoning ordinance doesn't require houses to be up to the proper, property line, do they?
No, so, um, in the C D three L district, your, um, setback range for your home is gonna be. A minimum thirty, a maximum fifty. In the C D three, the minimum would be ten and the maximum would be thirty.
Right.
So comparable to the, to the minimums under the old code would kind of fall into the mid-range of those ranges. So, um, old R three would have had a minimum setback of twenty feet. New R three, which would be C D three, has that range of ten to thirty.
That's certainly shorter setback if it's at ten feet.
Right. So if you have your garage right at that ten-foot mark, your car is kind of over the sidewalk.
A lot of cars you can't put in that.
Right. So that's where I was like, oh, this kinda does make sense. I mean, I, I, I feel like property owners should have the flexibility to put things where they desire them. That's just where I fall philosophically, but, but I understood after I thought about it. Why the garage wouldn't work in those, in some of those circumstances.
And residents of Mount Pleasant of, you know, we talk with people, uh, people when going on a walk or thinking about place-making neighborhood. And place-making is a buzzword in the planning profession. No one really says, oh, I just can't wait to go on a walk around my neighborhood. Just to go look at a whole bunch of garages and then the houses tucked behind it, you know, it's just, uh, we wanna have a, you know, interesting place to live. And part of the form-based code is to emphasize the form of the house, not a garage with other boxes behind it. And, um, you know, it's type of thing that I could, uh, I, I understand where the, um, you know, people we met with at the last work session are, are coming from. But I don't see any need to go and make any changes at this point or in the near future. Um, you know, you can always, I'd be happy to bring up the issue, you know, in a couple of years, but I don't, I. I'm not persuaded that we need to go and, uh, make any, any, uh, public policy changes based on what I, the evidence I've seen.
What about, um, um, just, you know how we compromised on the sloping of the roof? Could we compromise on the placement? Because we, we definitely do wanna go to the new, the new look, what, what people really want. But is there any room that we could maneuver to maybe get enough that the car could park out in the driveway?
I'm thinking, isn't that what Brian Kunch brought up at the end of the work session last month, if I'm not mistaken? Maybe I, I misremembered. I just thought there was a conversation passing at the very end of that is asking if there was some way that there was some sort of. Um, you know, alternative that could be proposed and, um, I thought the answer was no, but I, I could be just misremembering that as well.
I don't think there was an answer. I think it was kinda.
Brian has worked with, um, Joe, hasn't he, to try to?
Yeah, um, yeah, as he mentioned at the work session, he, um, went so far as to develop a custom home design. To meet the code and, um, a variety of other criteria that, um, that Olivia, Mr. Oliveri was looking to have met with a home design.
I, I went around and looked at our four and, um, well, it's, it's actually three. Cause the one built over by me doesn't have a driveway in the front, but it's, it's, um, it's not bad. I mean, I, I'm not a builder, but.
It's not.
Just the placement. There, there's one on Brown Street that I drive by all the time, the new house on Brown Street. And, um, I kinda drove by and I thought, what's the big stink, you know?
And in this one, the garage is placed behind.
No, the garage, the garage is to the side, but it's just the, how many feet would it be? Ten?
It's setback twenty feet.
Twenty, oh, that's right, twenty feet setback and it's, it's, um, looks good. But yet it, the house itself is, is more forward and, yeah.
Well, I think part of what Joe was saying was it, that, that construction doesn't make it so easy to have another.
Room.
Three hundred square feet. On the second level.
Well, I got the impression he thought it was cheaper to have that square footage above a garage rather than. Not have it, not have it above a garage, that it was cheaper to have the garage within that envelope instead of not.
Yeah.
Below the second floor.
Yeah.
Which is.
It's hard to put that three hundred square foot somewhere else without changing your footprint. But building instead of, I, I would suppose, building an, an entire support structure when you've already got one. Around a garage.
I suppose you just make the footprint a little bit larger then.
Yeah, yes, it would.
Exactly.
I would, I would tell you, a, a number of, there's been a number of master plan communities around the country that have been built under form-based codes. And it's extremely common for those to have habitable space above the garage. Um, and those garages are not, um, at the front of the property. So there are ways to do it, but it is a, it is a different model of, of home building than.
It's just really a decision about how flexible we wanna be. I mean, that's, that's really the bottom line.
But we can't be too flexible that we go beyond what came out of our process when we did the zone. Um, the rezoning, because we had a whole community that met, you know, and, and, um. You know.
Right.
It isn't who, who's the loudest, it's who, who is the most, you know, what was the most information that we got. So we have to be, be honor that.
Yeah, well, I mean, people will decide with their, they'll, they'll decide if it's of value to them or not.
The, the morning sun had finally, had, had surprisingly taken upon itself to now deliver the paper. At the, at the garage of our house, but that's in back.
Oh, yeah. It's a long walk in your pajamas.
Couldn't figure that out.
I know Mindy's listening, so maybe she can address that for you if you wanna share your address. All right, so.
Does it seem like any more guidance from us or we're all set?
Well, I'd like to know, I mean, if the, if the guidance is you're letting it ride, then I'd like to hear that. If the guidance is flexibility, I'd like some more direction on how flexible and to what extent. And if the direction is, I need more information, then obviously I would need to know what you need to know in order to move forward.
Does anybody wanna, um, have a little look at something maybe that's just a little further? I, you know, I don't know.
I mean, I, I, we, I will tell you, I mean, uh, we can't expect that, uh, small change is necessarily gonna make folks happy. So I just want you to be prepared for that eventuality. We did adjust the roof pitch and there's still some consternation about the adjustment. But.
Um, and is it, is it how you park your car or is it what can you build over the garage? What's the issue?
I think, uh, to Commissioner Rice's comments earlier, um, there are a lot of interdependencies in this code. Because it's, the philosophy is form-based, so just changing like one number in one table is gonna have ramifications on other things. So, eh, any change would, almost by necessity, is going to be somewhat complicated to create. But I'm, I've, we've been having these conversations for several months now. So I've had lots of time to think about different ways that might happen. I haven't worked all of the details on, on that. Because it's not a high priority when there hasn't been a direction from the planning commission. But if there is interest in some sort of adjustment, um, I can certainly bring you back. An option or options that might work. I don't know how many options might work without testing them out a bit. And seeing what unforeseen circumstances they might create other places in the code. Um, but if the desire is to let things continue and let more houses be built and see, um, where we are down the road. We can certainly do that too. I know that, uh, Brian's been working with two other builders on three other houses in the community. Um, all of whom are able to have demonstrated that they're able and willing to meet the code requirements. So we may have some more evidence on the ground of what things look like.
I guess I would like to see, uh, the evidence of houses actually being built. And if there aren't a, a number of houses being built in the community, then maybe we could come back in the summer. And address this. Uh, if we don't have a lot of building permits and we see that drop. Then we can say maybe there's a reason why people aren't building in the community. Would that be reasonable, you think?
I think it'd be reasonable if it was a longer-term time span, because you look at the demographics of the area. Well, I guess we'll find out after the twenty twenty census when they release the final numbers in twenty twenty-one. But, I mean, in general, without the, um, you know, the region growing much in terms of population, we just can't. We can't assume that correlation is causation with the number of building permits for, you know, a smaller area being, you know, strongly.
Well, we could compare with union township.
Well, or even thinking, yeah, more broadly than, than that, just in, in the region, um, there's not, you know, tons of demand for new housing. Given just demographic issues.
But if.
And C M U losing population, everything else.
But if the township is growing and we're not, then we will.
There, there's lots of variables, different variables.
There's way more vacant land in the township than there is in the city. There's only so many houses that can be built.
Yeah, I mean, under our old code, you would have had the, the city population barely moved and the township population grew a hundred and some percent. In the last, in the ten years prior, uh, between two thousand and two thousand and ten. So, uh, and right now, I mean, to be frank, we're, what we're hearing and seeing, um, is that material prices and, and construction. Labor prices are so high that a lot of people are foregoing projects because they're just, um, very expensive. Um, I, we're actually pretty pleased with the amount of single-family home construction we've had in light of that. Uh, because the vast majority of home construction in our community is done by one builder who is currently choosing not to build. Um, so, and notwithstanding that, we've had, it, it's been on pace with what we would normally see from our other builders in the community.
Do we know how many buildable lots are left in the city? I think we've mentioned it before, but I don't remember what it is.
No, was it thirty-six or?
Yeah, there were numbers shared at the last meeting, but I will tell you, I went back after that and, and took a look. And there are, um, as far as I can tell, and this would be distinct separate tax parcels. There'd be seventy-three lots in the community that are existing lots that are on a street with water and sewer that would be buildable. Um, that are in our residential districts. Um, exactly, or more or less exactly, half of those are double lots. So a situation where like, you know, Commissioner, Chair Honig, uh, owns the lot next to our house. So they're technically a buildable lot, but they're probably not likely to be built on in the near future. Um, there are twelve lots of those seventy-three that are owned by Mr. Oliveri. Uh, there are five lots owned by the school district for their building trades program. There are, um, now, this would have been as of January twentieth. There were only three lots on the multi-list service, so when you go to look for vacant land in Mount Pleasant, there were only three lots total. That were listed for sale, um, which is, I think, also a contributing factor into the number of home builds that happen in the community. There are two lots owned by the city of Mount Pleasant, which are underland contract with Mr. Oliveri, and there's one lot owned by Habitat for Humanity. And then there, there are, uh, several other lots that are owned by just an individual that's not a neighboring property owner. That's not a, to my knowledge, a home builder that are just there. So I don't know if they were purchased speculatively or inherited by family members or what the circumstances are, cause they're scattered all over town. And there's no ready explanation for why they're vacant, they're just there.
There's just three that are actually listed for sale.
Yeah.
There, as of, yeah, that would have been January twentieth, when I checked the M L S, there were only three lots.
That's more than what I saw listed last summer, if I recall. I don't recall seeing more than, yeah, I don't even recall seeing one.
Yeah.
Would it be possible to, uh, see a list of the changes that would have to be made to the code? For it to go back to the way it was?
I mean, the way to do that would be to adopt the code that the ordinances that previously existed, not to necessarily.
Well, what the builders are asking for, can that be changed in a few lines or do you have to scrap the whole code?
I mean, what the builders are asking for is to not have a form-based code. So you'd be scrapping what we have and going back to a code which isn't what we developed in twenty sixteen. And seventeen and eighteen.
Okay, so.
So if we change.
Can't be done or I'm just, I'm just saying.
It can certainly be done. I mean, you can revise the code any way you want. It's just that a, what, thus far, what we've been asked to do. Is just to eliminate regulations on residential building lots altogether. Um, we haven't had a lot of proposals to, for those, um, solutions of what would work. That would still meet the intent of the project, so.
I mean, zoning it back to the way it was defeats the whole purpose of doing the new zoning.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just, I'm just saying, we already changed slightly the roof pitch. And what's the, really the only other thing they're asking for is the garage setback?
I'm not entirely sure, to be honest with you, what all is on the list. Um, it hasn't, it's not very clear reading the list. Um, but the, the garage orientation is sort of integral to a form-based code. So blowing up that standard throws a lot of other standards into a tailspin and that's, because they're interrelated. So it's not impossible, but it is much more difficult, uh, change, a little, or I should say more complicated to change. Than the roof pitch was because that was basically strike through a number and you could do it. And it didn't have, it didn't have other impacts in the code. It was an isolated standard that could be easily fixed. The garage placement standard and setback requirements, we have different setbacks for the side from a garage. That we might wanna readdress if we change the front setback of the garage. Uh, we have certain facade build-out requirements that we might wanna change. Those front setback requirements, those ranges would possibly change. And those will have ramifications on other standards too, if those change, so it could become a ripple effect. And ultimately, it is just basically gonna get us to a place where we don't have the form-based code that we developed with the community. So again, I think it can be done, it's just a matter of, um, if you wanted to make, adjust the standard. I think that will be complicated but doable. If you wanted to do away with the standard altogether, then you've essentially eliminated a form-based code. From existence, which.
Well, I mean, having the form-based code, it's all nice, but we're talking about maybe less than one percent of houses in Mount Pleasant. Are gonna be built to a form-based code?
Well, you have seventy-three buildable lots today and in addition to that, you have forty-seven acres of vacant land that are zoned residential. Um, that could be developed into up to two hundred and fifty-nine lots by code.
Is that, is that the property out next to the cabin?
Uh, no, that's not that property. That's, um, the property at the end of Broadway Street, uh, at Bradley. That's the property between, um.
That's in the city, what used to be the cornfield?
No, yeah, next to Clark Funeral Home.
Right, yeah.
That's in the city.
Okay.
Um, there's land to the west of Mary Maguire School, which is in the city and vacant on cross lanes. Um, and there is property behind Community Mental Health, um, off of Crapo and south of Broadway. Um, and then in addition to that, there's another twenty-eight acres zoned agricultural on Broomfield Street. Which is past the community church, not the property you were mentioning, not the big property, but the farm. And the Mount Pleasant Center property, which depending on how that's allocated, could be, um. Probably a hundred to two hundred acres of additional residential developable land.
So even though that's, we currently have seventy-three buildable lots, there's a potential for a lot more.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
So it does matter. I mean, back to the idea that it's only a few pieces of property is not necessarily.
Well, just talking now, it sounds like there are some variables that just giving it some more time. To see how it played out would be a very fair thing.
I think that's why we say that we're, you know, we, we've thought about this enough. I would just say come back to it in, you know, a couple of years, not just one year, but maybe two years from now. Um, for those who are on the planning commission at the time and Jacob's here at the time, that it'd be nice if we had the institutional memory to say, hey, let's take a look back at what we looked at it. I mean, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, it's twenty twenty-two and let's think about that now. I don't know what the protocol, if that's practical. But, um, given the soil rate of development in central Michigan more generally, regardless of specific municipalities, I think it's just a longer timeframe that might. If, if there are sincere prob, you know, issues long-term, um, it should be apparent, you know, by then. And there'll still be lots of developable land, you know, in city limits by then.
But speaking of all that developable, bo- land, we wanna, we. But speaking of all that developable land, we want to, we want to match our rate with the areas around us. And if we're not growing at the same rate, then I think that would prompt a faster, uh, look back than a couple of years. Because if we wait two years from now, that's two full bu, building seasons, so, you know.
But has anyone sought to develop those areas in recent years?
Well, I mean, the last time the city would have platted, well, the neighborhood in the Project 2000 area site condominium, so I don't want to say platted a neighborhood because that would be inaccurate, but essentially the same thing. The last time those, um, several lots were created would have been in the 90s. So it's a, it's a rare action in the city, at least in the last several decades for that to happen. And as you all know, there's still, um, at least, where did I put my numbers, at least, uh. 15 or more of those vacant lots are in that neighborhood that was platted back in, uh, or site condominiumized in the 90s. So even regardless of standards, those things are going to take time to be constructed on.
If we didn't have any builders coming in and they were all having problems with this, I might look at it a little differently.
So let's look next, next January or February and figure out where we're at, does that sound reasonable?
Yeah, we could certainly, at the end of, um, 2020, provide some information, maybe have Mr. Kench join us for our work session early next year. And give you an update on where we're at and let, share with you, um, well, by virtue of your annual report and your community improvement award survey, you'll likely have pictures of the newly built homes in the community. And we could talk you through, because the other thing I want to point out is that this code doesn't just apply to new construction, there's obviously people who are remodeling homes and making other adjustments. And so we're working with homeowners all over the city every time they're putting a deck or a porch or an accessory building or anything like that on their property. And so Mr. Kench is, um, I mean, we work in tandem, um, but he can probably provide a more thorough picture of what he's seen over the course of that year. Um, and answer any questions you have, um, at least with more technical capacity than I could.
Something like a December 2020 work session?
Yeah.
For Christmas, great, how about January?
The one's fine, yeah.
January would be good, okay, that sounds good, I will, I will put it on his calendar, or I'll ask Becky to do that. Invite him to the, yeah, Becky won't be here. All right, thank you.
Thank you, uh, next item on the agenda is the 2050 master plan, Mr. Payne?
Thank you, Madam Chair, uh, is this our last item tonight, I moved my agenda. So on your agenda tonight, uh, as you know from, uh, receipt of your packet, we, uh, received the 100% proposed master plan draft. Last week and it went live on the website about an hour before you got your packets. So you were among the first to know that it was there. That entire document is posted on the project website, you can click through from the city's website to get there, um, upleasant2050.com. The, uh, we are at the point in our process, looking back at our schedule, uh, for the project that was created before we even went out for bids. This is the meeting, so we're right on schedule where we were looking to have the plan referred officially to the city commission for release. The Michigan Planning and Aboling Act requires that when you create a master plan, that you release it for 63 days, um, for a public comment. This is, um, specific to certain entities that were required to provide written notice to, to let them know that the plan is out there. So utility companies, adjoining jurisdictions, um, entities like that. So that's specifically why the state law requires this part of the process, is for that notification to go out to those entities. This 63 day review period is before any public hearings can occur, so this precedes any public hearing process. The intent of the timing was to align this so that the open houses, which the city commission approved in January, could happen, co-terminus with that 63 day review window. Um, and so that we can do publicity accordingly, so that folks know that the, the proposed plan is out there. Since your packets were prepared, we did finalize the scheduling of those three open house events, and so I'd be happy to share that, that information with you now. On Wednesday, March 25th, we will have an open house from 11 a.m. to 2 p.m. at the Rotunda at the University Center on Central Michigan University's campus.
11 a.m. to?
11 a.m. to 2 p.m., so we're excited about that, knowing that about half of our population is on that campus every day. So should be a great opportunity to interact with faculty, students and staff. On April 23rd, we'll have two open houses, the first will be from 11 a.m. to 2 p.m. at Cops and Donuts, Central Precinct on South Mission Street. I'm sure you're all familiar with where that's located. And the second will be from 5 p.m. to 8 p.m. here in the city commission chamber. So these will be great opportunities for folks to come out, interact with staff from McKenna, city staff, uh, review the plan, answer, ask and get answers to their questions. And hopefully get the community excited about what came out of our charrette events April of last year. So no action needed on the open houses tonight, other than I'd encourage you to, um, if you're interested to attend and certainly let friends, neighbors, coworkers, anyone who's part of this community who, um. I mean, encourage everyone to come, it impacts everyone, so hopefully people will be interested, but certainly if you know folks who would definitely be interested, if you want to let them know about those events, very casual, these are a drop in type event. So if you can come at 1:55 to the 11 to 2 event, that's fine, you don't have to be there for three hours or for the, at any particular time. Tonight, the only action that is sought is for the planning commission to make an official referral to the city commission. So that at their February 24th meeting, they can act to officially initiate that 63 day review period. And I'd welcome any questions, we also, Paul Lipens from McKenna is here tonight, so if you have any questions for Paul, you can answer those as, you can answer those for us as well.
Quick question, I, I assume now that's 100% done, that they came in and gave a presentation and what was 70% done? During that 63 day period, are they going to be giving their 100% presentation to the planning commission or?
We will probably have them back for their next presentation at your public hearing, um, which would be sometime after the 63 day review period ends. I can tell you the 100% draft, there are no major changes, um, the vast majority of the changes were, um, where we had erroneous information, so like, uh. It says West Campus Drive and it should say East Campus Drive, we had some Parks and Recreation information, that's book four, which is the Parks and Recreation book. Paul can correct me if I'm wrong, but probably had the most significant changes. And that was because since that 70% draft was finalized, their budget was finalized and their capital improvement plans were finalized. So a lot of that information's been added that wasn't there before. But the vast majority of the changes were strike through of words and replacement with correct words. So the, the general philosophy, tone, goals and objectives of the plan are the same, um, as they were in that 70% draft that's been out there for several months. But certainly if you have a specific section you'd like more information about, I know McKenna would be happy to provide that information.
Okay, uh, now, do, do we have to have a public hearing on the planning commission for this as well as?
Prior to adoption, the Parks and Recreation Commission, the Planning Commission and the City Commission will have to hold at least one public hearing. And the Parks and Rec Commission has to do that because the Parks and Recreation Plan is integrated into it.
Are the public, um, open houses prior to our public hearing?
Yeah, because they're, they would be, assuming you make the referral tonight and the city commission initiates the 63 day review window, we would still be, I believe, within that window, March, April. We'd be just about at the end on the day of the open houses, so we'd have to come back to do a public hearing process after those open houses are over.
So we're voting without the open house?
You're voting to refer the plan to the city commission for release to the public.
Well, I just want to go on record saying I would prefer to have the open house before the vote, that's just my preference.
We're just voting today so that it gets released to the public, so people can see it and comment on it, we're not voting to approve it until after the open houses.
Okay.
Yeah, tonight's vote has no bearing on the ultimate approval of the plan, other than it checks the procedural box to move the plan forward to the city commission so that we can notify those entities that it's. Part of the reason why the timing is set up this way is because we want folks who've received that 63 day notice to have an opportunity to attend our open houses. So this is one, an opportunity that goes beyond, the statute just requires we tell them that the plan's out there. If they want to comment or not comment or call us or not, that's on them, this will give them an opportunity to actually come to the open houses and talk to the consultant and learn more. Which I think will be hopefully a more effective way of engaging them than just the minimum by state statute.
Any other questions or a motion?
Do we have to make a motion for this?
Yes.
Move to refer the proposed master plan to the city commission for their consideration and release for review and comment, consistent with the requirements of the Michigan Planning and Aboling Act.
Second.
Any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes, next item on the agenda is staff report, Mr. Payne?
Thank you, Madam. Thank you, Madam Chair, um, next month, I'm going to see if I can get some information and maybe I, I will extend an invitation to Assistant Fire Chief Doug Lapsinger. And see if he's available for your March meeting to come in and answer any questions you all might have about housing licensing, since. We had a lot of questions about that tonight, it's been a while, several years back, uh, Mike Dunham, then the Assistant Fire Chief came, uh, to give a presentation, I think was very. And I learned a little bit from that presentation too, so I'll see if I can get that set up, if not for March, then a subsequent meeting. We are expecting, uh, at least one special use permit application for March, which is for a truck rental business. And, um, at this point, that is, uh, all I'm aware will be on that March agenda.
Truck rental?
Truck rental.
Like U-Haul type trucks?
Correct.
Okay.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.